Lobby of Town Hall in the town's website. And I have an invocation.
Dear heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this day. I want to thank you for this town that brought us here and given us the rights and the privilege to have this meeting. Please give us the knowledge to take care of the business at hand that needs to be addressed. And at the end of the day, let us give you all the blessings in glory for anything that we accomplish. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and ledges, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the two representative for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have you presented?
If you would like, you could have Mr. Robert Wolf come up and introduce himself to council.
Okay, alright, good. Mayor and council, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Rob Wolf. I'm the new field services manager for the Municipal Association of South Carolina in the upstate region. And many of you probably met and remember Naomi Reed. She's been promoted within the association. She now runs the risk management services side of the association. So that's our two insurance companies. Myself, I'm a former city manager. I was the city manager in Charole. And this opportunity came up and I'm glad to be here because this is home territory for me. I live about 10 minutes up the road and just outside of the city of Spartanburg. So right now, I'm just kind of getting out, making the rounds, introducing myself. Patrick was kind enough to invite me here, meet everybody tonight since y'all are meeting. And I really do look forward to working with y'all. If y'all have any questions or if I can help, you know, the municipal association provides trainings, we provide classes, or just any questions you may have about local government, I'm here to try to get you an answer or help you get, help get an answer if I can't answer it myself. So like I said, this is really just a brief introduction. I just wanted to meet everybody and say hello and really looking forward to working with you guys. And I think I gave out cards to most of y'all, but if I didn't, I'll leave some with Patrick here. And if y'all don't have, if y'all have any questions for me now, I'm happy to try to just answer any brief questions. But if y'all don't mind, I may take a leave because I do have a four-hour drive to Myrtle Beach this evening and be making my way down there.
We feel for you.
I love being on the road. So that was one of the appeals of this job.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Very nice to meet y'all.
Alright, thanks, Rob. Tony, do we have anybody speaking? Okay. Alright, need approval of minutes of September the 4th, 2025.
Motion to approve minutes for September 4th, 2025.
Need a second.
A second.
Motion made in a second to approve the minutes of September the 4th, 2025. Any questions or any comments?
I have one question.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Is there a copy of those minutes in this paperwork?
Yes.
Right on top. You found Rick?
No, I didn't get one, but that's okay. I'm good. I read them online, so.
Okay. Everybody else have them? Okay. Alright, all in favor? All opposed? Okay. Alright. Have any reports there? Patrick?
It's up to y'all. I've got the, in your packet is the administrative report on there and the chief's report. I did not at the time have the report from CC9. As soon as I get that, I will send to you. They had, I had sent them what the request was and the changes on there. And they were having some trouble trying to put it all on one sheet. But we're going to get back to me and provide that once they have it.
Okay. Anybody have any question?
Can they provide, we didn't get one last month either, so they would have August? No.
You get one last month, but I think there's some things on there that you wanted to have differently on there.
Yeah, and I had, I had both of them. The one that we first had, I think in July was fine. And all he had to add was the table that said what the permit was for and the cost. And then when we got the next one, pretty much all the other stuff that was on the first one was taken off and it was just the opposite of what was asked for.
Yeah, I went on their site and I tried to print something off. And that's what you ended up getting on the first time around. So it had all the, some of the details in there, but it didn't have all of the cost on there and that's something they hadn't put in there. And so I asked them on the next report to print one up and they, that's what they provided. So the second time around was what they normally provide. But we'll, I'll work with them. We've, we've explained where we are on there. And I've explained to them, there's certain columns that y'all don't need to have on there, like the permit number or the tax map number. As long as you've got the address, the property owner, what's being done, what's the cost of the work to be done, and what's the permit cost, and then the breakdown there. It's really all you're looking for, under my understanding.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Police Department. So how many officers do we currently have?
I believe we have three officers right now.
Three officers? Full-time?
As far as I know, yeah.
Does that include the chief or?
So it'd be, I guess, two and the chief then?
Two and the chief?
Yes, sir.
We're making moves to hire more officers. What happened, you know, did we end up hiring the officer that he, he talked about as far as lieutenant? You know, last, the last meeting I was here, he was trying to get a special.
That officer ended up going somewhere else.
That officer went somewhere else and they declined it? They didn't want to?
No, they, he ended up going with a, that officer ended up going to another town.
Okay.
Speaking with Chief Halls earlier today, he got four interviews coming this week. And he's, he's very hopeful with a couple of them. But he's actively trying to, trying to fill the staff.
Yeah, he's talking, he's talking to me, we got an interview Thursday.
That's correct.
With a class, he's already, he's qualified already.
Are we, are we doing exit interviews?
Yes. I talk to the guy before they leave as well.
Can I, can I see copies of those?
I don't have anything written down there. I have, you know, interviews and I talk to them individually.
So you don't, you don't keep track, keep record of the exit?
I mean, I, I talk to them before they end up leaving.
So you don't, you don't record anything and?
I don't record anything, no.
Okay. You don't write anything down? Take notes of the conversation?
No, I take.
I mean, that's, to me, an exit interview should be notes to, to hand to the chief and to some other people so that we can improve on certain things. That's.
Absolutely.
I don't want to know, you know, I just want to know, is there something that we need to do to satisfy or strengthen the, the opportunity here? You see what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Is there anything that stands out that you can recall?
Not that I'd like to discuss in.
No, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, if you wouldn't mind, just, I would like to know that, you know, where are the deficiencies or lacking or where, where the strengths are too? You know what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
I think, I think all council members should know those questions, you know. Number, the other thing I wanted to know, budget. I haven't seen a budget in quite some time. Do we have any kind of, anything?
We.
Is it going to be like two years?
July and August?
Yes.
That's been like two years that we're supposed to be getting a spreadsheet.
No, it hasn't. You've gotten multiple during that time.
Regardless, is it, is there?
I'll, I'll email it to you today.
I, if you don't mind, I would like it published with the meeting minutes from today. So whenever these minutes come out, just publish the budget with the meeting minutes for next month. Is that okay? I mean, I'm only asking, is that something we can do?
Yeah, it won't be, so like, for instance, where in October, it would be through, through the end of August.
That's fine. Yeah, I, I just want the public to be able to see something.
Absolutely.
You know, if it's August, it's August. If it's September, we get it in November and in September, that's fine too. But something is better than nothing. I think, I think all taxpayers and citizens should be able to see somewhat of numbers.
Yeah.
Everything okay?
No, she, she had given it to me, but there were some things that I wanted to.
Tweak?
Correct before it ended up going out. But.
Okay.
I'll make sure that that gets, get to you.
Okay, yeah. I, if you don't mind, when, with the meetings for next month, have them in the meetings and for approval, so they can go online and, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you'll have it July, July, August, September at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Moving on to number nine, Board of Commissions and Committees, do you have any reports on those?
One thing I want to apologize for getting to the administrative report, there's a lot of information on there. And I'm actually surprised that there aren't any more questions. And I'm, and I'm guessing it's because of the fact that y'all may not have had a chance to review the whole thing. So take your time to review this and if you have any questions, please email those to me because there's a lot of information that was put out.
I do have one, two questions actually. Paclet Station Park. So the, did, was there a grant received for that? Okay, I remember you telling us before that, that a nonprofit had to apply for that. The town could not do it.
The town, there were some issues with the fact of the, the property being a Norfolk Southern property and Norfolk Southern giving the money for, you know, basically its own property. But as long as it went to a 501(c)(3), that it would be fine on their, on their side of tanks.
So it's not that the town couldn't do it, it's that they preferred that something other than the town actually do that?
Yes. And they, the town has gotten grants from them in the past.
Right.
But for this particular property, because of the fact that it is their property, they wanted to have another group involved in it and not directly to the town.
Is there a reason for that? Is just, that's just part of the conversation you guys had or?
It had to do with the foundation requirements of Norfolk Southern.
Okay. Meaning the grant issuers?
The issue of Norfolk Southern basically giving money back to itself to improve its own property, even though it's, the town is leasing the property.
That's weird.
Yeah. They don't normally, they, money from the foundation going back to the town itself, it's, it's kind of like taking 501, it's taking, it's money that they have put into a 501(c)(3) to get the tax deduction and then basically giving it back to themselves.
Okay. How big is the piece of property?
Five acres.
Five acres. How much of it is disturbed?
I don't believe any of it's been disturbed out there.
Okay, I was reading where the war miles are closing in and keep the soil from washing, there's also need to cede the property?
I mean, I mean, it hasn't, as far as I know, it has not been disturbed out there. There's been, you know, there's been moving around of some of the mounds that are out there.
Right.
But that's minimal. I mean, it's, it's well less than an acre.
Okay.
In terms of those, those mounds that are on the exterior of the property.
Right.
Okay, anybody else? Anything else? Okay, let's move on to number 10. A, consider an update to the Town of Paclet Employee Handbook. I think we had, Miss, section, you had some suggestions. I think Patrick, you, you had those done now?
No, and I did notice some of the, the changes that I had asked for, but I also, which I was so glad Mr. Wolf was here tonight, I went over some of those changes and was asking him about some other changes, but I didn't get here soon enough. But there are some things in here that still need to be tweaked.
You didn't, you didn't get what in time?
Excuse me?
You said you didn't get what? Or you didn't talk to him? Okay.
Mr. Wolf, on, on, I showed him that, well, the changes that were made that I had asked in or suggested at the last meeting. And then I still went over some of those changes that were made and there's still some, some things that need to be tweaked in it. So, I mean, I can see you afterwards. I know I kind of didn't send you the notes that I needed to send last time, but I have those here. I don't, before we pass it.
Is there anything there that, you know?
Well, for what, this disclaimer here, this page here has to be exactly as it is in their model. And it's not, I think that was.
Why does it have to be exactly the way it is in our model?
Because it's very important that it is, and he stated so as well, that it's very important that this disclaimer follows the model of the MASCE employee model.
Those are suggestions by MASCE?
Excuse me?
Those are suggestions. They make suggestions. But I ran it by our attorney and our attorney says, as long as it stands out and it's, you know, it's very impactful on there with, with, you know, with underline and bold and caps, that's enough that's on there.
Well, in, in some of that, yes. And, and some of those in here that I had questioned that, and one of was under the equal opportunity employ, employment where it was asked to see the administrator or the mayor, I think, you know, if, if they get asked who they feel comfortable with, you know, the mayor or town council, which was in our old handbook and it was taken out of this new draft.
What, what was the equal opportunity? What are you saying in terms of who they speak with?
Yes.
Explain what you're talking about.
Do you mind, I'll take a second. Okay, for, for example, on 3.4.3, remote and flexible work were applicable. So our form of government is council form of government. The administrator works for the council and that includes the mayor. So the mayor is no more or greater than council members in that respects. So where it says, remote work may be allowed only for administrative staff whose duties can be reasonably. So who decides that? You know, and, and there's a lot of language in here where it refers to administrator, ask the administrator approval or mayor approval. It doesn't say council.
That's correct.
It says administrator and, and mayor.
My job is to run the day-to-day operations of the council.
I completely understand that. But when there's, when there's the verbiage, the verbiage that's specific to ask specific people, mayor or administrator, I think, I think the verbiage in here should reflect council at all times because of the form of government we have in respects to that form of government. It should not say specific mayor or administrator. It should say council. And to me, it's very simple. If there's a question that arises that you need an answer to, you can easily find an answer with council members. But it shouldn't just be your decision on everything, period. Council should, should still have a role in, in decisions being made.
Mr. Wright, would you like to take my job and do this job and be in, in charge day-to-day and doing all this? Because I feel like that's the direction that there's a lot of micromanaging that goes on.
That's according to and also following the MASCE employee model handbook. That's why I was glad that he was here tonight, so I could speak with him.
Do you have an example of that wording? From MASCE?
Well, one of those on page seven, under the equal opportunity employment. Any reports of retaliation should be made to the town administrator. If the report concerns the town administrator, it should be made directly to the mayor. I think that also should be able to make to the town council as well.
I'm asking for an example.
That was a very good example. It was either the administrator, in case the administrator, then it goes to the mayor.
That, what is she quoting, is what I'm asking? Is it, is she quoting what we currently have or what MASCE suggests?
Do you not have the old copy and the new copy that, did anybody?
No, I do. I'm just not on the page here. I'm just asking what you're quoting.
That's what I compared this draft to, to our, the copy that we had and also to the MASCE Model Employee Handbook and what they suggest.
Right, what did you just quote? What they suggest or what is in ours?
Do what?
What did you just quote?
What's in ours? I quoted under the equal opportunity. Right here. The EEO.
Right, right. In ours. So what are they suggesting is what I'm asking? If that's not, if you don't like that, what are they suggesting, the exact wording?
That, that, that they go to whoever they feel comfortable with and/or counsel.
Where's that quote?
That's what I, I'm glad he was here. That's what I was talking with him tonight about.
Right, where is that quote?
Which particular quote are you looking for? Her recommendation or the one that she's reading?
The recommendation. She wants it to say something else. I would like to see a citation of their recommendation of that. Not just her word for it. I may, I make a motion, we approve the updated Town of Paclet Employee Handbook.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Okay. Theirs says.
Teresa.
Excuse me?
He's asking for a second.
I'm asking for a second.
Why? He asked me where this was quoted at. And I just found it out of there. Here's the copy.
Okay.
They say, "Any employee who believes that has been discriminated against and violation of this policy should report the matter to," and it's a blank, "administrator or manager/mayor/council."
Okay. So it's consistent with what they suggest?
And then he also said, you know, for him, he would think as well that, that person should be able to go to whoever they feel comfortable with.
But what you're saying is?
That council should not be left out of, of anyone being able to approach someone who feels comfortable with telling them, you know, if they have been, you know, retaliated against or discriminated against, they should be able to come to whoever they feel comfortable with. And that was his very words as well.
So you're saying our draft is consistent with what they suggest?
It's, it's not. It's not.
It sounds like it. They left it blank?
Excuse me?
They left the, it blank?
Yeah, they left it blank.
Okay.
Administrator or manager/mayor/council.
Okay.
And that's, that's not the only place either. Another place, I mean, affirmative. Teresa, I'm.
Let me ask you this. Do we want to go ahead with the MASCE thing, do away with ours and just do it, do it the way they want it done? Or do we want to put some of our stuff in there? I mean, if we're going, we're going, we're going nitpick all the way through this thing? You know, we're going, we're going to be here for several, several meetings doing this.
I'm not nitpicking, Ned. I'm saying the council is being left out of these places where the council should be, not just strictly the mayor or the administrator.
I mean, I'm, I'm not, I don't necessarily want the, the power of doing that, but I mean, it, we've always said it would be the council, you know, would take care of all, all the stuff, but, you know, whatever you, we want to do.
Yeah, because it's.
If, if the handbook specifically says administrator or mayor and an employee was to go to a council person, then they could be terminated on, on those grounds instead of going directly what the handbook says. Let's say that, that, let's say the employee went to Tony and complained about something. Well, they could be, they could be terminated for grounds because the handbook says that they must go to the administrator or the mayor only. What she's saying is, is it should be a little bit more open. It should be to administrator or mayor and council or, you know, a member of staff that, that they're comfortable talking with. If it's a female and, and they prefer not talking to a male about it and they wanted to go to, to Tony, then I think that should be appropriate. All she's saying is that the language in here should be reflective of a, a, an openness for the employee to communicate with staff and administration. But it should not be limited to administrator and mayor only. The, the verbiage in here should include council as a whole at all times.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. If you want to add council, I don't, I don't know if I'd add like another employee. I mean, then you're just encouraging kind of inter-office, at that point gossip, for lack of a better term. But if they were to go to superior, like administrator, mayor, or council, I'll make that motion with the, that we edit it to add council.
The motion's already been made to approve as it stands.
I withdraw my motion. I make a new motion to update.
Let me make sure I understand this, is you want it set up so that if anybody, if an employee has a complaint that they would not come to me, they would come to either me or anybody on council?
That they feel comfortable with. And, and, and Mr. Wolf said yes, you know, why not? Why can that person not go to whoever they feel comfortable with?
What, I mean, is, is there a reason why this needs to be passed tonight? Like, is there?
It was in our old handbook.
Is there a circumstance in which the, what's in this handbook needs to exist?
This is like the third or fourth meeting that we've been going through.
That's, that's okay. I mean, that's, that's okay. I mean, if you, if you want, I have it all written up, the changes that I, the differences that, that, number one, you said that there was a few changes made. I know.
You've got some changes to be made on here?
There was more.
There was more changes than, in here than, than what you actually notified us on.
But you've got some changes that you want to have made to this?
No, I'm saying that I've, I've got, I've identified of all the differences and, and then the verbiage that I don't really agree with.
And you didn't send that out in advance to everybody else?
Why not just send it in advance?
Yeah. Oh, oh, wow. We, when did we get this? I mean, let's not talk about advanced. I mean, we, we only get our council packet two or three days before. Is there an issue with that?
I'm just wondering if it's, you know, everything's all brought up in the middle of the council meeting.
If you don't mind, would you, would you, would you stop with attacking council members and just do your job?
Hey.
Just ask some questions. Yeah, but, but try to do it without being a smartass.
Let me, let me speak, Jason. And I'm, I'm running, I'm running, running this show here. So let me tell you this.
Control your administrator.
Hang, hang on a minute.
You just allowed the man to talk to council however the hell he feels like?
Hang on.
Something's wrong there. YouTube famous.
Hey. I've called you to attention. Can't you just stop? Can't you just stop?
I can, yeah.
Well, stop. Alright, and we're, what we're going to do, I think we should do it, you know, bring it back one more time with all the correct, all the corrections y'all have and bring it back to us one more time and that's it. I mean, we, we can carry this thing on and on and on. We've had it four times already and we hadn't got it right yet. You know, get it right and go ahead with it. I mean, we, we can go ahead forever correcting ifs and ands and who, who's in charge or who's, who does it come to see. But I don't think we should, we go to anybody they feel like going to. It should be somebody that's superior to them, not any, anybody like another employee.
Well, not, he wasn't assuming. It's not assuming it's another employee, just like it would be written, the administrator, the mayor, and/or a member of council. Not, I'm not speaking of another employee.
Oh, you did.
Why can't we just do it as, as their model? There's several towns and cities and don't ask me which one. I mean, you can go on there and look that in the, in the state of South Carolina, have that model and they just tweak it for their town. It includes everything in there that the Municipal Association thinks is important for municipality to have.
I, I agree with, I agree with your point. So I'm going to withdraw my original motion, but I am also going to make a new motion to update the Town of Paclet Employee Handbook with the edit that employees may also go to council.
I didn't hear what you said.
There's far more, far more areas in here that need to be identified.
That's the motion I'm going to make tonight. You don't have to pass it, but this is ridiculous.
I'm going to have a motion to, 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 to this, whether, intentions of changing those you, you mentioned to include the council instead of just the mayor and the administrator. Does anybody have a second to that?
Well, there's other changes in here too, that we're looking like we're not being able to discuss.
Okay. So do we have a second? We don't have a second, then the motion's dead. We don't have a second, then the motion's dead. Do we have a second? Okay. Motion's dead. All right? Okay. Do you have a motion?
I have a motion that we go with the employee model handbook on the municipal association of South Carolina and use theirs and just tweak it to fit the Town of Paklet, because it's pretty much like our old one followed. And there was a lot of things that were taken out of our old one that really didn't have to be changed.
Okay. If we agree with that, I mean, that's fine, but, you know, that's what we already had done four times before. If that's what we wanted to do, yeah, if that's what you wanted to do to go with the municipal association thing, that's what we should have made plain that we should have done that.
Well, let me say this. I didn't know it was going to be changed and rearranged and things taken out and things added. It didn't need a whole lot of changing, just tweaking, because times have changed.
Okay. All right. Can we agree that we can do it one more time?
Can I just make a motion that we follow the MASCE?
You can.
Make a motion.
That needs to, we should probably review that. We don't have that in front of us. Why would we vote on it?
Well, and there again, if we all would have done our homework and looked at the draft against what our old one was and then go to the municipal...
I thought we were improving it from our, we thought we were improving it from the old one to this one.
Yeah. He had a month just to kind of put that...
We took things out and we added things in, and then we rearranged it.
You're talking about doing your homework. Why didn't we bring this to us beforehand? You know, we could have had all this in front of us, then we could have done it, you know. But, you know, we go in, I just wanted to make sure that we can do it one more time. Four times should have been enough. We should have been, you know, we should have made the motion to do it. If you wanted it to MASC, then that's what we should have done.
There again, I did not know he was making all the changes that were made. It did need to have all the changes.
But we had it four times.
Okay. So can I just ask the council?
You can.
Between now and next month, go on their website and look at their employee handbook model against the one that we have. There are a lot of towns and cities in the state of South Carolina that follow that same model and just tweak it for their town, and that would be good. It would be safe. I worked for 13 years for a labor and unemployment law firm. Employee handbooks are very important.
I agree.
And it's not to be made light of.
I'm not making light of it. I'm just wanting to make us...
My thing is, Teresa, and I'm not going against anything you say. So if Patrick was to take this and just go by, because to me, the model that they have that's on the website that I looked at, it's suggestions. It's not saying that you necessarily have to do it that way, but it would make you feel better if we follow it just like they're saying, the model, without changing anything, just do it like that, and you feel though it will cover everything that needs to be covered. Don't switch it around, don't move nothing from the front to the back, add the council back in, and that'd be that.
What I did say is that we could follow that model and tweak it for our town. Because if you look at the other models that other cities and towns use, they tweak it. Towns are different in things.
Tweak it how, though?
Just like I was speaking with him back there.
Specifics.
You can tweak it for your thing, and it wouldn't be a lot of tweaking, just, you know, some changes.
But tweaking, he tweaked it. I mean, he tweaked it.
Making small changes that it fits your town, not that it fits a larger town or...
That's exactly what I ended up doing. Because I took this and I looked at the base of the last three years and some of the issues and concerns that have come up and things that have happened to, and to address current things that are happening in local, in the world politics and everything. That's everything that I looked at. There were things that were not in there that needed to be in there, and so that's what I ended up looking up, updating and changing on there. It is not designed for a town of 20,000, you know, a bunch, you know, it wasn't designed for a town of like 50 or 100 employees. It was a small town.
There again, that's why you would make it to fit yours. It's not hard. I mean, for you to do as many changes as you did in this one, it wouldn't be hard to just make the other one, tweak the other one to fit our town, our town needs.
It was just to make it more organized and streamlined.
Well, you know, I don't think the MASCE would put it out there if they didn't think it was something that would be effective and/or good for the municipalities of South Carolina.
Okay. We can talk about this all night. You making a motion?
To follow the guidelines, of course, to fit our town.
Yeah, but it's got to be specific. We have to have a draft, an actual, we can't just say and tweak it. What are those tweaks going to be? We have to have, we can't vote on something that's not in front of us.
No, I took...
If you want to wait another month, then we can start...
Between now and the next meeting, we can all go in and look at it and compare it to what this handbook...
Okay. Are you going to, but if you have issues with it, are you going to present those ahead of time so that we aren't doing a workshop in the council meeting again? Are you going to let Patrick know?
That's what we're supposed to do here. We're supposed to discuss it here.
Well, we are, but I mean...
It should be discussed ahead of time.
Okay.
All right. You have a motion, but you don't have any specifics, so do you...
How can we vote on that?
You want to just let, you know, let us go over it? In the meantime, let, get back to Patrick with our tweaks, as you call them, and let him come up with a handbook and bring it back to his next meeting.
Yeah, or I can make some myself and have it when we come back. But I think everybody should be aware of it.
Well...
Okay, but can you email it to us ahead of time so we don't have to write an entire handbook in front of the public here? There are, you know, we have other business to do.
That's what town council is for, is to discuss...
No, that's a workshop. That's a workshop. We can't write an entire handbook right here in the meeting.
I'm not saying we won't.
Okay.
Teresa, I understand what you're saying, Teresa, I do. But my thing is, with the model handbook, you keep saying tweak. What do you want to keep and what can he leave out? Because if we go by what you're saying, you just want him to take the entire thing that the municipal association have on here and just plug in Paklet.
I didn't say take...
But you keep saying tweak. What do you want him to keep and what do you want him to take away?
There's some things that may not apply to the town that may apply to our larger population. There's...
But my thing is, is that not what you did, Patrick?
That's exactly what I mean.
You know, without putting, without...
Would you like to go through the employee handbook?
I went through it. I looked, I looked. So unless I'm just blind and not seeing what Teresa is seeing outside of adding council back, I don't know, you know, what it is you want in there other than what he got, because other than that, just take what the...
Well, here's another thing. In our old one, which our old one pretty much followed the MASCE model. You see here at the beginning...
At that time it did. Now, it's not updated. It was updated.
Right on. But what I'm saying, it didn't need to be completely changed. This right here, the complaint procedure and investigation, which follows the anti-harassment, this is the old one, sexual harassment, which also follows the MASCE model guide. Then behind that, it tells us, okay, the complaint procedure and the investigation of it, which follows along with the harassment. So he took that and moved it to the very back of this handbook, and it shouldn't be moved to the very back of the handbook.
The idea was that...
Page 36.
But is it the position, does the position of where its place matter as long as it's in there? As long as it's in there, would you just prefer it to be in the front?
The complaints are not just for sexual harassment. The complaints are for anything.
I mean, yeah.
Right. But it follows along with harassment, retaliation, discrimination, or behavior, which is the anti-harassment and the sexual harassment. So right beneath that, okay, so here's the complaint procedure and investigation that goes along with what I just read here. Why do I need to wait and read that all the way in the back of the book?
We need to read the whole thing if you're an employee.
Excuse me just a minute. Do we have any active motion on the floor right now?
No.
I make a motion that we table the approval of the employee handbook pending modifications, suggestions by town council members to the administrator, and then it be brought up again before council to be approved at a later time.
A second.
Motion made and seconded. Table it and give us a chance to read over it and make improvements and get back with the administrator, and we will then come up with a employee handbook.
Can I just suggest we have that ahead of time? We don't have to hash it out at the meeting.
Yes.
If you haven't had it.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. He's asking...
I suggested that we table it. I don't care if it takes two months before it's brought back before council.
Jesus, seconded.
Right, right. I'm in favor of that. I'm just adding.
I don't care how long it takes.
I'd like, if you haven't had it...
We're not going to shut down without an employee handbook.
If you haven't had it, just send it to us so we can review it. We don't have to hash it out. That's all I'm asking.
Well, I just ask that everybody review it against the MASCE online.
Okay. All right. Got a motion and second. Any questions on that? Any additions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Okay. Moving right along. Consider the second reading amendment to ordinance section 2-58 of Article 3, Meeting of Mayor and Council in the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Paklet relating to appearances of citizens.
Motion to approve on second reading and amendment to ordinance section 2-58 of Article 3.
You have, you have that in, we had it last month, and we did it, y'all. Any have any questions on that? All right. I need a motion. I got a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
I'm sorry?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. C, consider the second reading of amendment of the flood damage prevention guidance, well, ordinance, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve on second reading and amendment to the flood damage prevention ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve, consider the second reading of amendment of the flood damage prevention ordinance. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. D, discussion regarding the contract of CCI for code enforcement and building inspections. We, Patrick informed me, he had a call right before the meeting here that Wayne Willis with CCI could not be here. I would suggest that we have a work session that would improve CCI, Wayne with CCI, that we can iron out any differences or anything that we have regarding the contract with CCI. Now, I would rather have it as a workshop and not a executive session.
I agree with that. I'm going to offer my suggestions, though, considering Mr. Willis doesn't seem to be prioritizing our meetings here. I hope he can make it to our workshop, but we don't know. The last meeting, I suggested that we maybe didn't need CCI. However, I know there's a lot of very passionate opinions on that, but I will offer, instead of pursuing that, I would like to offer three policies for us to consider leading up to this workshop, if it happens. The first policy, and all of these should be really easy to pass, but I'll give them to you so you can consider them, but they should be no brainers.
Are you going to get your, denied, or you want to...
I want to put them on the record now, and I'm not going to ask for a vote. I'm just saying, we can go into a workshop with these ideas. This is what I've come up with. I was hoping Mr. Willis was going to be here so we could actually get something done, but the first would be, when CCI fails an inspection, I would like them to provide a quote of the code to go with that. Not a link or a citation, but an actual quote so that people can look at that and see it in black and white. This is the code they used to make this decision. It can be difficult for even someone with experience to find those codes. That's the first one. Second one, if someone has an electrical permit, I would suggest that we make it a policy that they go in and they inspect electrical. Not electrical and look under the sink at the plumbing on their way and this and that. And the reason I bring this up is because it's actually happened, where they denied an electrical permit because, not because the electrical was done wrong, they agreed it was right, but they found a plumbing issue while they were in the house, and they used that permit, that electrical permit, to hold it over the heads of the homeowner, so the electrician could not get paid. And the homeowner didn't have to pay the electrician because he wasn't in breach of contract, because the contract said you get paid when your permit is closed out and approved. If CCI is going to say, we're not approving your electrical even though it's done right because we found this other issue we want the homeowner to fix, that is extortion. The homeowner could just say, I don't want to hire a plumber to fix that.
I'm sorry, what'd you say? That's what?
That's, sounds like extortion.
You said it's extortion?
It sounds like it. Number three, and this is a conversation that I believe was had with RCI, our last inspector. One pass on these inspections. You go in, you inspect. If there's something wrong, you come back and you check that one thing that failed. You don't do another full look. Oh, I forgot this other thing I found now. Now I get to charge you for another reinspection. That incentivizes this company, which is a for-profit company, which I have no problem with, I hope they are profitable, but it incentivizes them to drag out issues that they find because they get a reinspection fee each time. They're professionals, they know the code, they're very good at what they do, there's no reason they can't do one pass. If something fails, they come back and check that that's corrected, and that's it. So those are three things I think are very reasonable, and they address pretty much 100% of the complaints that I've gotten, even some that I've seen firsthand, that I've experienced. So I know it's happening. Now, I'm not suggesting that CCI is in the business of extortion. I don't want those words to be twisted. Perhaps an inspector was overzealous and thought he was doing the right thing. We need to make some policies to ensure that that doesn't become a regular thing. That's all I've got.
Are you making a motion for us to have a work session on that? All right. Do I just need to suggest this? I suggest that we have a work session and have CCI present, and we just figure out, you know, what the complaints and the problems are, and he can address those and why they're doing it this way, why they're not doing it this way.
Just a clarification, Mr. Willis did not realize until recently that his daughter had a performance this evening. That was the primary reason that he's not here. But I can get a list of dates and times that he's available, and then I can send it out to council, and then y'all let me know based on those dates and times, what's the best time that you can get back together for the workshop.
I think also it'd be wise that if we have any specifics that need to be addressed, that first off, I'll forward them to Patrick so that he can make a list during this workshop that we can go down and copy all of the council members so we can see what the issues are or what the concerns are, that we're not all suggesting the same issue to Patrick. But we need to have an agenda that we need to go over.
Well, those are my three. They're on the record.
All right, and I think we should have something. If we disagree on them on some things, we should let them know that in advance so they won't be blindsided when we come in and...
I think all recommendations and concerns ought to be forwarded to CCI regardless, before a meeting, and allow them to elaborate on those topics prior, and then see what happens. The thing is, is the inspectors are bound by law to inspect a certain manner, and they have to do a certain thing based on their licensing. And... And, and I think Mr. Willis will probably speak about that, and, and maybe even some inspectors get some, get some, you know, questions from his inspectors on some of the things, allegations, towards, towards some of these, you know, circumstances that's, that's come about.
I think so too. I think, I think we, you know, give them the chance to look them over and, and bring it, you know, the subjects that we are concerned about, bring them back to us, and, and say, this is why we do it, or this is why we can't do it, you know, or whatever, you know. And that way, we have a workshop, and that'll clear the air on all of this.
And I, I've said this many times, we already pay taxes to Spartanburg County. And what we're doing is, we're paying taxes to Spartanburg County, and then we're paying a, a for-profit company to come in and make profit on top of the...
What are we paying this company?
Excuse me?
What are we paying this company?
The citizens, not, not the town. The citizens. They, they do pay extra.
But it's the same fee, though?
It's not the same fee, no.
It is.
Spartanburg County, Spartanburg County's fee schedule is a little bit, it's the same fee schedule, yes, but the, like a new permit, new construction permit is based on the same thing RCI used to use. So it's still that table where it's the average across the country. It's still the same thing, where Spartanburg County says, how much does your thing? Show us your budget. Show us your material costs. Show us, show us what you have, your proposals. So it's still gonna be, it's gonna be different. And in my, in my perspective, it's, it's higher. And, and it should be higher, because it's a for-profit company.
No, they just work more efficiently.
Disagree with that.
I know. You always do. And that's, that's okay.
Okay.
You can't go to them for $36,000.
All right, that's okay. That's, we'll, we'll get back with the administrator, let him know what, and forward those on to CCNI, and we'll have all that ready for the workshop. And he'll get us the dates that Wayne is available. Okay? And that we, and we're available. Okay? Any other thing on CCNI? Okay. Going on to E. Discussion regarding the chipper truck.
I'm gonna make a motion that we do the minimal repairs to get the truck safe and road-ready versus spending 70, 80, 90,000 on a, another, on a used truck. I think that we can get a couple more years out of it, and I think, even if we got a year or two, and the brakes cost 5,000, I mean, 5,000 for a year or two of work, you know, is...
How much would a dump trailer cost?
It's right around 10,000 to 12,000 dollars.
That's about the same as, or a little bit less than what...
Well, that, that would have to be outfitted, correct? With a box. That would have to have a box, a dump box.
That's one dog mouth.
I'm not hearing what you're saying.
Are you talking about an open trailer, or a box trailer?
An open trailer.
Yeah.
Is that an open dump trailer?
No. They take, take the brush and all like that, bring it down to the, oh...
Pier.
Parking lot down here, and chip it up down here, out on the ground.
And then what?
Then we get rid of, haul it off to the dump, whatever. Or we'll deal with it if we put it in the truck.
Yes, ask the question.
Versus chipping it directly into a...
What's Travis think?
Travis is wrestling with that one.
What does Travis think?
Actually Travis believes that, would much rather have the, the dump trailer as, of all the options that are on there.
Seems like a lot of extra steps.
But they got their job done.
Well, the thing about it is, you know, when he, we go out and get those, those limbs and things up, I mean, we got them up. That's what, that's the main part of it, is getting, getting them up, you know, from where the citizens are putting it out there. They want it up. That's what they're paying for. That's what we wanna do, get them up, then we, we can do, you know, get them all off or whatever.
I agree, except we've now have piles forming at areas that we've had a lot of volunteers clean up, and I can see that being an ongoing thing.
The location of the limbs was a bad area. We were trying to put it in a different spot, and they, it was a miscommunication on there, but it should've been much closer, much further away from where, where it was.
But it's still in the parking lot at the fishing piers.
Which doesn't get used.
It's where we do, like, event parking and...
Question. What are we gonna pull the dump trailer with?
There...
We currently have the, it would be pulled with the F-250.
The landscaper's truck?
Yeah.
So the landscaper's gonna do the limbs? Or were they just not worked that day?
No, they'll still work. It's just that they'll end up being, they'll end up kind of leaving somewhere to be able to do whatever they're gonna be doing, like grass cutting, that sort of thing. And that will be taken care of there.
And then swap trailers?
What's that?
And then they'd have to swap trailers, drop their equipment trailer somewhere, and then pick this trailer up, and then...
The, the trailer that hauls the lawn mowers. You're saying leave it somewhere, and then get the dump trailer, and then...
Yeah, leave them at a spot with all their equipment to be able to take care of. And then these guys will go out and pick up stuff. Now, one thing that could end up being, could, could be done on this, and we, this was what was talked about during the, the two weeks that we were cleaning up limbs, is having one crew on site at the fishing piers who was just chipping, and then the other crew that was out picking up all this stuff. At that point, you end up reducing the amount of time that you end up spending on limbs, then you have all four groups working on beautification efforts.
I think the truck is still worth, was it 4,600 bucks? I mean, if we're gonna put it to auction with no brakes...
It was about 4,600 dollars to get the brakes done. I don't know, I think there was included in that packet that you've got with the cost of the tires on there. That was one thing that initially we looked at was, Carolina International said, you know, you gotta get the brakes done as soon as possible, because it's on, it's metal on metal. But the crew that drives it said the tires need to be done very soon, if not now, as well. And that's gonna be a large cost on there. The, the concept that, of, of using the dump trailer, what I, what I really like about this is that I don't have to tell you how many times the chipper has, has broke down and it's gone into the shop. It happens a lot. And so with this option, the guys can still go out there and pick up limbs, and get them off of people's properties, and get it away from, you know, and put it in a spot that we can chip later. Because that's the main thing people are looking for, is just to get the limbs out of their, their property.
What's the additional cost of renting that, that green machine they were using? I saw them using that.
Skid steer, yeah.
That skid steer. Is that an additional cost?
No, I, I, the, the reason we end up doing the skid steer was to try to get a lot of it done in a, in a short amount of time. From the, the guy's perspective, they would much rather be able to pick up stuff on, on the side of the road with, you know, their hands, and just kind of throw it in the back of the trailer, you know, and, and just pile that stuff up until, until we take it down there. Now, one thing that has been suggested that I wasn't, I'll give you all the same thing, is to not do chipping at all, and just pile them up and take them up to the Wilford landfill. The problem is, is it has a, it's a, it's a math question on volume. You put a bunch of sticks in the back of a trailer versus mulching those first and then putting them back to the trailer. The mulching is gonna end up having a lot smaller space, and so you can end up kind of mulching five, six, eight sized, trailer sizes. Going to the landfill is about two and a half hours round trip. And so every time they have to go, that's time that they're not in town working on this. So that was the big thing that I'm, I'm against, just piling them up and then taking them to the landfill. I would love to have a place on site, and we're still working through that option now, is to try to find a place in Paclet that the town owns, that we can just dump limbs.
Or we have a monthly town bonfire. So you're, you're asking, you're asking for 10,000 for a dump trailer?
I'm giving, I, I'm having y'all make this decision on here. I, I mean, there's benefits and different sides of things. The, the biggest concern that I have, I don't think that you need to buy anything at all, because you currently have a 25,000 dollar a year geo-bond payment that you have, and then a 25,000 approximately payment on the sanitation truck. I, I think you need to pay those two off first, before you bring on additional debt. So I'm suggesting you do something, at least to kind of get you three, I think it's about three more years until both of those are paid off. But one thing that, when we were, when the group was cleaning up the alleys with the mini-skid steer, the dump trailer was probably the most valuable thing that they had, because at that point, they could just take it somewhere, dump it, and keep on going.
My, 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 my personal opinion on this truck situation is, a lot of these items are just general maintenance. Like, it's stuff that's been not, it just needs to be done, that hasn't been done in, ever. Brakes, clutch, lights, things like that are just stuff that wears out over time. And, and because you drive it from this spot to that spot 50 feet, you're gonna wear a clutch out quicker. So I, I personally feel like a dump trailer's a good option, and fixing the truck is another good option. And probably while the truck is getting repaired, take the chipper to get it repaired too. Find out what the major issues are, if it's a wiring thing, see if there's a harness available. If it's blades, if it's starter. I know it's generally, it's never the same problem, but...
The chipper's good right now.
Chipper's fine. I mean, is it, is it worth sending to somebody to, a once-over, just to make sure it's in good shape, so when we get the truck, we get the truck and a chipper, and everything should be good for...
If I'm not mistaken, it just recently came back from Carlton, who built it. And Carlton's the one who, who overhauls it and does all the work.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it makes sense. You know, you can, you can have the, the dump trailer out there, and some guys picking up stuff in alleys, and you can also have the chipper truck out there picking up some of the larger stuff. To me, it makes sense, because certain times of the year, that's the biggest thing, is let's just get it up. So fixing the truck and buying a trailer makes sense to me, if, if the budget allows such, you know, I, I don't know, but I, I, I think it makes sense to have a trailer, and I think it makes sense to fix the truck, too.
If we get a trailer, we're gonna have to do the brakes, and we're gonna have to do the tires at some point. We can't just... I know that truck is old, but we can't just say, well, it's worn out, it's time to get something new.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I, I think these are general maintenance items.
And if the trucks, and if we decide not to use the truck, I think it would probably get more at auction if it was relatively ready to go. So if it's 4,600 to get it road-safe, even if it needs tires in the next six months, at least, it can roll over the auction block.
Make a suggestion then. When we fix the truck...
Ask that question.
And use it, use it, and then later on, buy the trailer, the dump trailer.
What's the question on there?
That says 19,000.
So when they originally looked at this, that just to do the brakes was around 4,600 bucks.
Just to do the what? I'm sorry?
That, just to do the brakes was about 4,600 dollars. And then, at one point, I said, let's just figure out, because we know that the tires are gonna be next. That was one thing that Travis mentioned. And then he also mentioned there were some issues with the clutch. We've always had issues, the fact that it's, it's, it's dangerous for those guys to drive at 5 o'clock in the morning, because there's no lights on it. They don't like to take it out of town if they, if they can help, help it, because it's just not...
It'll get shut down.
Right. It's not very roadworthy. So to get everything done on it, to be in great working shape, I mean, actually, not even just great working shape. I mean, you look at there on the, there's tires, lights, clutch, brakes are the primary things on there. The reason it, it runs so high in terms of dollar amount, it's about 12 grand in just Now, the, the concern that I have in terms of the auction block on there is, it is a 1990. I hope that the town could get something out of it, but you end up putting 5 grand to get maybe 1,000 dollars out of it.
You think that would auction for 1,000 dollars?
The last trash truck, we couldn't even sell, and so we put it up for scrap.
Well, was it road-ready?
That 1990 would sell for parts, honestly.
Trash, the track...
It's not, the, the, the tires and rims that are on there are not even legal for road use. They're split rim. So it would have to have new tires and rims.
We run into, we run into issues already with the trash truck that the town has currently that just balled. And the issue that we run into is the capacity of the truck is more than what...
The axle tonnage allows.
The axle tonnage allows. And so they, when they took, go up, once, when they go up 595, there's often times where they get pulled over from the transportation police, because the weight per axle is more than it's supposed to be, even though the manufacturer built it that way. So yes, like what he men, what, what Mr. Wright actually mentioned is, this is probably not roadworthy enough for someone to be, to want to buy it for something.
Absolutely not.
All right. And what we have done recently is, we rented a dump trailer and a skid steer?
We have been renting a dump trailer and skid steer. Now, we rented it, and we had some issues with, there was a couple times that it broke down, and Sunbelt didn't come out in a timely manner, and so I negotiated with them to give us an extra week for free. So we ended up getting it for seven working days, or seven working days and a little bit more, for the cost of five.
All right. Now, how often, if, if we continued to do that, how often would we have to do that?
It's my understanding, talking to the, from talking to, to, the landscaping crew went out, and in those two weeks, and it's, it's, it's less than two weeks, because it was broke down for a little bit, finished it. Limbs are done. They're caught up 100%.
So how often, how long before they would need to do this again? A month? Two months?
In my opinion, if you're doing two days a, a week, or at least a day and a half of limb pickup, you should be able to keep close eye on this, and, and stay on it. But...
We're telling our residents that every Friday, their limbs are gonna get picked up. So if we can't do that, I mean, that's what it's supposed to be, weekly.
And that's the thing is, is, I don't like to keep...
I don't think we ever...
If the, the dump trailer option is, it's satisfy, it satisfies the resident, at least in my opinion, because it can always be picked up. Chipped is another world, but if the chipper's down, you know, the, the chipper trucks worthless at that point.
Okay, well, let's, we need to make a decision on this.
Mr. Wright?
I would like, because you've, you've been here a while, and you, you're familiar with the truck, and I think you may have driven the truck, but you know some of the guys and some of the issues that are out there. Just because you've been here as long as you have, I would like to kind of, I would like to hear, hear you be more verbal.
What?
Be more verbal.
Really?
What?
Regarding, regarding the truck.
Never thought I'd hear that.
And this is, I mean, this is something that, you know, I've been here for three years. I, I don't, you know, I'm not an expert in terms of public works, but some of y'all have been here for a long time, and so I, I wanna make sure that you realize, at the end of the day, this is your decision. This is, you know, this affects you, and your residents, and, and you, so, you know, you know, I'm, I'm giving you a suggestion and a recommendation, but I want y'all to own this, and say, this is where we should go with this.
Which is, can you spell out your suggestion again?
I mean, my suggestion is that, at least for now, the, the dump trailer option, I, I think is, is the best option to, to move forward with, and...
And what is?
And then in three years from now, once you've paid off the other two large capital purchases, then you can look at other options.
And what is the all-in on the price on the dump trailer?
I don't have a final price on there, and the reason being is, because I wanted to kind of get a direction from you guys, where you wanted to go with this.
I think you should find a dump trailer that's suitable for what we're doing. Does the, does the 250 have a gooseneck hitch, fifth-wheel hitch?
It does not. I talked to different trailer companies out there. 12, there's like 12.6 is the absolute max that I've seen for what we need in terms of size. I told them that we don't have a gooseneck, we just have, just a, a standard, you know, 5/8 hitch on the back. We also got a panel, if we need to end up doing that. But I, I asked, I asked trailer companies out there, what is the largest thing that we can, we can pull with an F-250 Super Duty? And that's, and what they've recommended is that 12.6 number is the max on there. That was all contacting trailer companies in the Spartanburg area.
Let's, uh, let's look at what a trailer would cost, that we would need. It'd have to have a tarp over it, because you have to cover your load.
Most of them come with roll tarp.
Get us some prices on trailers. Also, check with the, or any contract companies, and ask, are there any containers available that we could chip straight into the container, and they would come pick it up, instead of us eventually having to load it back into our trailer and haul it to the landfill? They may be an option there with Spartan Waste or Spartan... and haul it to the landfill? There may be an option there with Spartan Waste or Spartanburg County or somebody on that line that would park a dumpster and let us fill it and call and let them know when to come pick it up and dump it far as for our fee. Maybe three, four hundred dollars. That's cheaper than us driving to the landfill and back with two men.
The other option with that is, um, I, I, I would, I, I think there's, I think there's people in the community that would love to have our mulch. It would have to, it would need to sit for a little while first, but there's a lot of people who may be interested in the mulch that's out there. We end up using, the volunteers end up using some of the mulch out there.
Well, I, I know from past experience, when we used to do it on Dr. Brown's property, that he had somebody with a bulldozer that would rotate it ever so often so that it wouldn't spontaneous combust. Uh, so that's something we have to be careful of. Mulching wet wood and piling it up, it, it can ignite.
And that's why I don't think the town, if, if, say, uh, just a random person in the community said, I want a, a dump load of it, I, I don't think that's a good idea. I think there's a liability issue for the town.
I don't want them coming back and saying, hey, this is full of poison oak. I don't, I mean.
Right.
I got medical issues because of the mulch you gave me, so we gotta be careful with that.
I think it promotes termites.
Okay, so what's your, what's your motion then? Or your suggestion? That we table this pending, uh, Patrick, get us pricing on dump trailers and, uh, bring it back before the council at next meeting. Okay. All right, that's, you bringing it as a motion? I'll make a motion. All right. Motion, table this and get them related, bring the information back, anything?
On the purchase, on the purchase of a dump trailer.
It's just a discussion. We don't need a motion.
Yeah.
We just need to give him direction.
All right. Need a second? Uh, Patrick, I mean, uh, Jason said that we don't need to make it in the way of a motion. It's just a discussion and, uh, we can bring it back before the council next meeting. We're just not gonna.
We just need to give Patrick direction at this point.
Yeah, what the.
Expectations.
What I was looking for and what I've been pricing out right now is, is one with a retract tarp on there, uh, ramps that slide back into the trailer itself. Um, up, something that, the.
Versatile.
Yeah, if you needed to run a skid steer up in it and haul a skid steer.
And then something that's low enough, uh, sides on there if we want to use a mini skid steer and dump stuff in there.
Right.
And then the weights and all that kind of stuff. So we've been, I've been talking with the, the crew and what, what works best for them.
All right. Okay, we're giving him, uh, direction now. Uh, we don't need a motion.
The only thing I'm looking for is color at this point.
Okay.
Green.
I agree. All right. Number eleven, new business, anybody?
Okay. It's empty. It's empty. We can't add anything.
All right, uh, so you have anything?
Um, no, the only thing that I have, um, I had one of the people in my district complain about the road. I think it's Beach Street, um, where Gethsemane Baptist Church sits. Um, they saying that road needs to be cleared a little more. I guess when we had the storm, um, it's still some, um, trees down.
What's the street?
I wanna say Beach Street. Yeah.
Part.
Is it in the town?
Probably, part of it's probably in, uh, Central Pack.
Okay. And, and that reminds me, if you don't mind, if, if council lets me, um, we, I think we put somebody out on Facebook on there. If we have it, it'll be out shortly. Um, uh, Carroll Street, um, will be paved, um, in the next couple of weeks, and Knuckle Street will be paved in the next couple of weeks. Uh, and we're, Carroll Circle, Carroll Circles can be paved. Um, they finally are, have bid it out and Spartanburg County is, is coming out. They should be, they should be starting the nineteenth, twentieth, um, of this month.
Can we, uh, check Beach Street and see what part of it is ours and have it cleared off?
Beach Street for limbs debris, that sort of thing?
Yes.
How much of Beach Street is in the town of Paklet?
That's what I was trying to figure out because that's not one that. That pops up a lot.
Yeah, it might be.
I think it's appropriate to go identify where all the debris is located on that road and verify that it's in the town and then, and then work with the Public Works Department.
I think that's what I said.
We'd work with the Public Works Department of Central Pack.
If it's in the town of Paklet, then it's Central Pack.
Suggest them anyway.
I don't, I, if it's in Central Pack, they can, yeah, they can, they can call the county. Or if she of Central Pack wants to pay the.
Okay.
Town of Paklet to pick it up.
Anything else, Star?
That's it. Thanks.
All right. How about you?
Just a reminder, um, that November fourth election, uh, the, the new voting place is the Benjamin E. Mays. Trying to encourage people to come out and vote.
Tom?
Also, November eighth, we have an event in Paklet, a new event, um, food truck takeover. Well, it's called, uh, Southern Fried Food Festival. Um, try to.
Sponsored by whom?
Uh, Operation Gross Spartanburg is handling that entirely, so, um, pretty excited to see, uh, how that turns out. Just try to promote it and word of mouth and get people out there.
We need to improve, and we need to get our, uh, get this information out to our citizens, uh, uh, and, and people that's helping us, you know, the Gross Spartanburg has helped us out with this, and if we have a good turnout, they'll do more than that, and more than these.
You're saying November eighth?
Things for us.
November eighth, yep. I believe it's eleven to four P.M. on West Main Street. Is that right, the time? Is it eleven to four? That's the official time?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, I wanna mention one other thing. Uh, I was reading through some old, uh, I think it was a resolution that had been voted on in twenty seventeen, if memory serves, uh, or it might have been twenty twenty. That council was looking into having some broom students paint murals down along the river. Um, council did actually approve that, and then COVID hit, which I think sidelined that, and it's something we should probably revisit.
What was the resolution again?
It wasn't COVID it hit. It was, uh, yeah, they, uh, oh.
Okay.
They had, uh, the students that were gonna do it graduated and it was.
Maybe it was before COVID. But if that's something that, that council voted on and wanted and we just never materialized, maybe it's something to revisit. Uh, so, uh, I don't know if it needs to go back to an agenda, but.
That was their art, uh, teacher up there and.
It would just, it would be nice, it would, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, it would be nice to see that, that kind of eyesore of a, I think it was a water tank they were gonna paint. Um, we probably have maybe developed a little more relationship or maybe a little healthier relationship with Milliken. Obviously, obviously it's their property. Um, but if, if maybe they allowed it once, I don't know why they, they wouldn't, um, allow it again. But if we've got students, art students interested in that, um, and then we also have a mural, uh, on the backside of the town hall that could maybe use some freshening, um, or completely reworked. Uh, I actually took it upon myself to call a muralist just to look at it. Um, he hasn't really got back to me on his assessment yet.
They had, they already had a, uh, uh, design and all for the mural down there.
Oh, did they?
Yeah. I don't know where it, where it went.
I would like to see something colorful.
Yeah, we need some color down there.
Alley was here.
So just wanna put that out there, you know, plant it in your, in your heads is, you know, what we want, if we want something. I would like to see something, um, and start spreading the word on that. And that's all I have.
Yeah, just to follow up, is if they, you were able to locate it wherever we could place an event sign on Highway nine?
Yes, um, uh, Mr. Brackens has, uh, has somebody to contact, uh, Morning Star Church on there. Um, I've got to talk with them and get some type of, uh, agreement because we don't want to. Well, if you've seen the ones that's at the fishing pier, it's, it's more or less permanent, um, and that's what we wanna do. It's have something that's more permanent there, and with it being permanent, I wanna make sure that we have an agreement. Um, so I'll be talking to their pastor on there.
Got it. Another area you might wanna look into also, on number nine in the curve, right before you go down to one seventy-six, right in there where, uh, the alternator signs at, and, uh, Mr. Winstead and Core Drilling, they have their signs in that curve right there. That is more than likely a DOT right-of-way, but they are already a couple of, uh, billboard-type signs, probably ten, twelve-foot high, right in there. That may be some words that you could look at. Uh, and in that curve, it could be visible from, coming from the four lanes or going back to the four lanes. It's probably a mile from, it's not even a mile, it's a half mile from Morning Star, so.
Yeah, a lot.
Would you wanna think about putting something coming in from Jones doorway? I mean, because a lot of people just come in that way and just come to maybe the dollar store or the grocery store and then turn around and go back. They don't head all the way out to one seventy-six or they'll turn right there at the four-way.
Of course, after the election's over, we'll have the, uh, billboards to be up for rent right there at the car wash again too, so.
And we can, um, if John's just kinda giving me ideas in terms of where to put those, the, the sign frame, uh, if it's in DOT right-of-way, we'll, we'll do an encroachment permit to be in the town.
Check right there. Uh, there's an alternator repair shop, uh, drilling, uh, Mark Winstead owns the business down there, uh, right in that curve.
We should mention River Fest as well, eighteenth. I forgot about that event.
It's COVID. Yeah, we've got the River Fest and then shortly thereafter, before our next meeting, we'll have, November the first, we'll have the dedication on, uh, Main Street.
Yep.
For Mr. Lambert.
Yeah.
Uh, I've spoken with a couple of members of his family and they're excited. That's gonna be on a Saturday morning at ten A.M. Right in front of their house. Right in front of Mr. Lambert's house. Uh, I'd like for you to get in touch with the media. I know you've got some dignitaries that's gonna speak.
Just so you know, the, the location of the signs, they typically put that on the very, the very beginning of the road and the end of the road. And so what they are gonna end up, I, I requested it to go in the yard itself, uh, and they said with DOT roads, they're gonna put one just past, um, Coleman Store, the left or side of the road, um, as that's the beginning of West Main Street, and then they're gonna put another one around Gold Mine Road, uh, so when people are coming in off one seventy-six.
That'd be fun. Uh, and if it's in an area that, uh, it's not being maintained, I'd, uh, like for us to look at how we can maintain it. Just, uh, keep, keep it cleaned up around the post and, uh, where it's visible.
We were planning, uh, to put it, to, to have the ceremony in the, um, the, the property that we leased from Norfolk Southern on West Main Street. Uh, but if you'd rather end up doing it on their, in their yard.
You get with the family on that.
Okay.
However that goes, or we could always use the, uh, probably could use the area right there at the library for the, uh, veterans, the Veterans Park or the library parking lot.
Okay.
So.
And if, if council can let me know if y'all plan to be there and if any of y'all would like to speak, uh, Representative Moss will be speaking. Uh, it would be great to have someone from, from the town of Paklet speaking.
What's that date again?
November first at ten A.M.
It's a Saturday. Anything else, Rick?
That's it for me.
How about Jason?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, yeah, y'all mentioned about everything I had in, online. Uh, I just hope everybody get out and vote and, uh, we'll see y'all. Make a motion, will you, John?
A second.
Y'all, River, River Fest?
Motion made in a second. All in favor, so move. River Fest was brought up.
River Fest was brought up?
It was brought up.
Yeah.
You was probably reading. It's in two weeks.
I didn't hear you.
Yeah, he, yep.